Good evening and welcome to this meeting of the Boston School Committee. I'm School Committee Chair Jerry Robinson. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. I will ask all of my colleagues to unmute and join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Because this is a remote meeting, I will ask Ms. Sullivan to please call the roll.
Dr. Allkins?
Present.
Mr. Cardad Hernandez?
Present.
Ms. LoPera? Ms. Lau?
Present.
Ms. Palanco Garcia?
Present.
Mr. Tran? Mr. O'Neal? Ms. Robinson?
Present.
Thank you. We do have a quorum.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. Tonight's session is being shared live on Zoom and will be rebroadcast on Boston City TV and posted on the school committee's webpage and on YouTube. Tonight's meeting documents are posted on the committee's webpage, under the May 11th meeting link. The meeting documents have been translated into all of the major BPS languages. Any translations that are not ready prior to the start of the meeting will be posted as soon as they are finalized. The committee is pleased to be offering live simultaneous interpretation in Spanish, Haitian Creole, Cabo Verdeano, Cantonese, Mandarin, Vietnamese, and American Sign Language. After the interpreters finish introducing themselves and providing Zoom instructions, we will activate the interpretation icon, the globe at the bottom of your screen. Click the icon to select your language preference. Will our Spanish interpreters please introduce yourselves and give Zoom instructions in Espanol?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Good evening, everyone. My name is Juan Bernal, one of the simultaneous Spanish interpreters. Along with Mr. Rondo Dominguez will provide simultaneous interpretation tonight. Consecutive interpreter, Ms. Gabriela Carrera, will provide consecutive interpretation for school committee member, Spanish speaking, Ms. Rafaela Polanco Garcia. Muy buenas noches para todos. Mi nombre es Juan Bernal. Soy uno de los interpretes. Para accesar el icono de la interpretación, busquen, por favor, el globo redondo que aparece en la parte baja de sus pantallas. Seleccionen español como su idioma de preferencia. De cualquier manera, si se están conectando de un teléfono celular, de un iPhone o de un iPad, seleccionen en los tres puntos de la parte superior de la pantalla español como su idioma de preferencia. Bienvenidos, gracias. Thank you very much. Back to you, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Will our Haitian Creole interpreters please introduce yourself and give Zoom instruction in Haitian Creole?
Hi, everyone. Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening. My name is Joseana, Haitian Creole interpreter. C'est moi Anna Dijka. Je vais assurer l'interpretation après-midi. On m'a dit de cliquer sur le globe et en bas, comme là. On va commencer la conversation. Nous sommes tous deux déjà pour une écoute. Merci.
Thank you. Will our Cabo Verdeano interpreters please introduce yourselves and give Zoom instructions in Cabo Verdeano?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, everyone. My name is Josiana and along with Mario will be your simultaneous Cape Verdean interpreters for tonight. Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Josiana. Junto con Mario, nos damos acceso a los interpretes de Creole en el país norteamericano. Nos damos acceso a la interpretación simultánea. Nos clicamos en la icona del globo en la parte inferior del ecrã y luego queda disponible. Si nos tomas un teléfono móvil, nos clicamos en el tres puntitos y después seleccionamos la lengua de Cabo Verdeano. Gracias y buenas tardes. Thank you.
Thank you. Will our Cantonese interpreters please introduce yourself and give Zoom instructions in Cantonese?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, everyone. My name is Anna Terry and I will be a Cantonese interpreter for the meeting tonight. Buenas tardes. Esta noche, yo y Terry vamos a hablar en español en conjunto. Ya vieron el icono de la lengua de la región, seleccionamos el idioma. Entonces, el idioma de la lengua en conjunto, si usas el teléfono móvil, te pedimos que hagas más. El idioma de la lengua en conjunto, gracias. Hasta luego. Thank you. Back to you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Will our Mandarin interpreters please introduce yourself and give Zoom instructions in Mandarin?
Thank you, Madam Chair. My name is Maple. I will be providing Mandarin interpreting with Wei. Good evening, everyone. My name is Anna Terry and I will be a Cantonese interpreter for the meeting tonight. Please, today, I will provide translation for the Mandarin. So, please, go to the left corner of the screen and find the label. Then, click on the Mandarin channel. If you use your phone or tablet to access it, please click on the three dots to find the language service and select the Mandarin channel. See you later. Thank you.
Thank you. Will our Vietnamese interpreters please introduce yourselves and give Zoom instructions in Vietnamese?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Vi. Vi and I will be your Vietnamese interpreter for the meeting tonight. Good evening, everyone. My name is Vi. I am the translator for the meeting today. Please, look at the calendar and find the topic. When you find the topic, press Vietnamese. This will help you understand the Vietnamese. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Our American Sign Language interpreters are Katie McFarlane, Lucille Trainor, and Sherri Coon. Thank you all for assisting us this evening and thank you to all of the BPS staff behind the scenes who also provide support for our virtual meetings for this movie. We will now activate the interpretation icon at the bottom of your screen. I'd like to remind everyone to speak at a slower pace to assist our interpreters. And thank you to everyone who signed up for public comment. Couple of comments closed at 4:30 PM. Please make sure you were signed into Zoom under the same name you used to sign up for public comment. You can use the Zoom tools to rename yourself so that committee staff will be able to recognize you when it comes time to call on you. Thank you for your cooperation. I want to welcome our alternative student representative Tiffany Lau, who is filling in for Zaira Merza. We're delighted to have you with us tonight. Thank you, Tiffany. So, we have just learned that we will not have a quorum for the duration of tonight's meeting. Several of our members are dealing with health issues or other personal matters that came up at the last minute today. Given that we will not have a quorum this evening, we will reschedule tonight's meeting. However, we acknowledge that there are many people who have signed up for public comment and we want to hear your voices. Members of the public who wish to have a quorum or more of the school committee, hear their comments, are welcome to sign up for the rescheduled meeting. Those who would like to be heard this evening will still have that opportunity and we look forward to hearing from you. Therefore, while we briefly have a quorum, we will convene a hearing for the limited purposes of convening the meeting, accepting the minutes, listening to the public comment, and adjourning the meeting. I will now entertain a motion to convene this meeting for limited purposes.
So moved.
Thank you. Second? Is there a second?
Again.
Thank you. Are there any objections to the motion? Ms. Sullivan, will you please call the roll?
Dr. Allkins?
Yes.
Mr. Cardad Hernandez? Ms. LoPera? Ms. Palanco Garcia?
Yes.
Mr. Tran? Mr. O'Neal? Ms. Robinson?
Thank you. Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll now turn it over to Ms. Sullivan for public comment.
Thank you, Chair. The public comment period is an opportunity for parents, students, and other concerned parties to make brief presentations to the school committee on pertinent school issues. Questions on specific school matters are not answered at this time, but refer to the superintendent for a later response. Questions on specific policy matters are not answered at this time, but may be the subject of later discussion by the committee. We have fifty-three speakers this evening. Each person will have two minutes to speak and I will remind you when you have thirty seconds remaining. Those who require interpretation services will receive an additional two minutes. Speakers may not reassign their time to others. Large groups addressing the same topic are encouraged to consolidate their remarks or choose a spokesperson to provide testimony. Written testimony is appreciated and encouraged. Please state your name, affiliation, and what neighborhood you are from before you begin. Please direct your comments to the chair and refrain from addressing individual school committee members or district staff. When I call your name, please raise your hand virtually in Zoom. Also, please make sure you're signed into Zoom with the same name that you used to sign up for public comment. That will allow us to identify you when it's your turn to testify. We'll begin this evening with Boston City Councilor Ricardo Arroyo, Jessica Tang, Amelia Edmund, Tiffany Vassal, Zachary White Corbett, and Alfredo White. If you could please raise your hands virtually in Zoom. We'll begin with Councilor Arroyo. Okay, it looks like he has not joined the meeting yet. Jessica Tang? She's not joined the meeting yet, so let's try Amelia Edmund. Not seeing Amelia. Tiffany Vassal? She's not with us. Zachary White Corbett? And Alfredo White? Okay, our next group of speakers includes Skylar Nichols, Crystal Jenkins, Adriana Wade Smith, Andrew Robinson, and Shakara Robertson. If you could please raise your hands in Zoom. I see Shakara and I see Andrew. And Skylar. Our next speaker will be Skylar.
Hello, our school committee meeting. Here's my speech. Hi, my name is Skylar C. Nichols and I am a nine-year-old activist. We need to know if the fourth grade is going to stay out of school forever or will just get there for one year. We are advocating for all the kids who are in this school and who is going to be in this school for the future so they can have a fourth grade and above, not just us. Once they get to the grade, they should know they will be able to stay longer because this is an amazing school. Our school needs to be able to keep this fourth grade. This will help many kids in the future not need to change schools. Our school was so happy when our principal announced that we got the fourth grade. Imagine how happy the school would be if the fourth grade was permanent. If you love children and doing the right thing, well, our school, the PSH, needs this fourth grade to be permanent because it will make a part of a broken promise actually work and the promise will come true. Will you do anything for the school? Thank you.
Thank you, Skylar. Our next speaker is Crystal Jenkins.
So that is me. I'm Skylar's mom. Hello, everyone. Hello, Boston Public School Committee. I am the proud mother of Skylar Nichols, who is a third grader at the PSH. And the reason why I'm here speaking today is on behalf of my child in the community of the PSH school. As a parent and a community member, I am so... I just... I was hurt about what was being told that we're not going with... This is a trial period for the fourth grade and that, you know, we want to make this all the way up to the sixth grade. You know, our voices was... We voiced our voices last in February. We wasn't joking about what we were saying. We really want our school to succeed up to the sixth grade. So, with this being said, we want the school committee to continue to help advocate with us and help our school continue to grow and continue to give us the resources we need so that we can get to that sixth grade. And thank you and have a good day.
Thank you both. I don't see Adriana signed into the meeting, so we'll move on to Andrew and then Shakara.
My name is Andrew. You probably know me from last two school committees' meetings. We are so excited about the fourth grade and we are thankful because you gave us the fourth grade. One thing that is special about our school is that we have the PSH way. We learned about respect, integrity, excellence, and perseverance. This year, I won the Student of the Month Award for respect. This mean I was being respectful to everybody in the school and including myself. We heard that we were only going to get one year of the fourth grade. I think that you should show perseverance and give us one more year. Then, one more year. I think you should help us finish the fight. What we are going for is having a fifth grade, a sixth grade at the PSH. Before this, could you have imagined all these kids speaking up for the education like this? Imagine how badly we want this. So can you please help our school grow and not shrink? Sincerely, Andrew.
Thank you, Andrew. Next, we'll hear from Shakara, followed by Emerson Wise, Brenda Ramsey, Matey Polino, Bridget Reyes, and Felido Diaz. Shakara?
Hi, my name is Shakara. Thank you for giving the SHA a fourth grade, but you only give us a fourth grade for next year. You didn't tell us if... You didn't tell us if we have it for the other grade, second and third grade classes. I want to speak because we also really want a fifth and sixth grade. We have been waiting for this for six years. We are really scared about what will happen if we didn't win this fight. We are really trying our best, but the thing is that we should have had this already a long time ago. Now, we are fighting for what we should have. If we have to leave, we are going to split our friendship apart. If you've heard of my friend, her name is Nahemi. We've been friends since first grade and we love each other so much. Can you make our dreams come true? Please add a fifth and sixth grade. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jessica Tang.
Good evening and apologies. We are actually having our membership meeting at the same time, so I'm trying to jump back and forth. But members of the school committee, Superintendent Casilius, it's good to see you. So my name is Jessica Tang and I am a middle school teacher, proudly serving as the president of the ten thousand-member Strong Boston Teachers Union. Last week was Educator Appreciation Week. Unfortunately, instead of feeling appreciated last week, we heard contract proposals from BPS regarding paraprofessionals that were not only incredibly disrespectful, but some that we believe are against the law in regards to meeting the needs of special education students. For example, allowing one-to-one Paris to be pulled as substitutes whenever needed. This is unacceptable. Our paraprofessionals deserve better and our students deserve better. Existing language that guarantees Paris who get teacher license shirt interviews for teaching descriptions was described as a bur... I'm sorry, teaching positions was described as a burden by the lead negotiating attorney for the school committee. Our parent-teacher pipeline is important not only to homegrown educators, but also critical to our educator diversity efforts. Our parents who have taken the time and effort to become licensed teachers are not a burden. The proposal seems to be all about making things easier for adults in central office as opposed to what is best for students. And right now, our students and educators deserve better. To lift morale, to show appreciation, to inspire confidence that BPS is moving in the right direction, we need a win for everyone. The proposals we're advocating for are student-centered and are the antidote to the challenges our district faces. They're the solutions we need. Now is not the time for divisive adult-centered proposals. It is time for the school committee and all of us to come together to settle contracts that will help our schools meet all of our students' needs. I hope we can all agree that we do not need state intervention or disempowerment zones that would take away the little democratic control we have at all. We also do not need any more proposals that are created by attorneys or based on adult-centered needs that I know are not reflective of the values of this school committee. We hope that each school committee member moving forward will review proposals that are brought to us before they get to us. We want to work with you. We need to come together. And to come together, we need to meet weekly to get this done by the end of the school year. We are ready to roll up our sleeves and work over weekends to get this done for our students, for our schools, for educators, and for our city. And we need to come together to give everyone some hope. So, thank you. We need to settle this contract as soon as possible to provide the stability, security, and solutions our students and families deserve. Please prioritize the negotiations because our students, educators, and families are counting on you. And just really quickly, I wanted to shout out and support the SHA students here as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tang. For those of you who are joining our meeting in progress, the chair announced at the beginning of the meeting that we will not have a quorum for the duration of tonight's meeting. So, the quorum that we have convened the meeting and has agreed to listen to public comments for the duration of public comments, but that will be the extent of tonight's business and we will reschedule the meeting. We'll move on to Brenda Ramsey, followed by Matey Polino, Bridget Reyes, Felido Diaz, Keisha Gideon, and Brandon Michelle. If you could please raise your hands in Zoom.
Hi, my name is Brenda Ramsey, but before me was my daughter Emerson. She was called before Jessica Tang, so I'm wondering if she can give her speech?
Certainly. I'm sorry, we didn't see her signed into the meeting, so I'm glad she's with you.
She's signed into me. She's with me right now. So, she is here and ready to give her speech and then I will proceed after her.
That sounds great. Thank you.
Tell us your name first.
My name is Emerson. I am in first grade. I... I... I am in first grade at the PSH and I live in Dorchester. It will make me really sad if you shut our school down. What happens to the SHA might not seem that important to you, but it is our community. When I first came here to my school, I was really shy. I was welcomed into the classroom and then I started to feel like it was the place I belong. I've been learning so much this year, how to read, how to write, how to solve hard equations. I love my school. I want to go to the PSH all the way through sixth grade. I promise I will keep learning more and more and more. Let me keep my school. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And my name is Brenda Ramsey and I'm the mom of Emerson, who you just heard speak. She is in first grade at the SHA, as she said in her speech. And like many of the amazing students that spoke before me, we were granted a fourth grade, but only for a year, so that doesn't actually affect my daughter, who is only in first grade. And by the time she gets to third grade, we'll have to move out. I am the product of BPS. I have two children that were going through BPS. One of them I pulled out of BPS because of similar situations. And the problem I have is, as a community, parents, teachers, students sat down, we worked together to create a plan and express our wants and needs for things that were originally promised to us back in 2018. And the fact that we have to fight for things that were promised to us does not give me much confidence in BPS's ability to keep their word. We had a meeting and we were told by Dr. Casilius that she would be working with us and our meeting was canceled. And I... It's just concerning that we're promised these things and they're not... You're not following through on them. We really just want to have a seat at the table. You know, you guys offer the table, then you pull the chair right from under us right before we sit down and it's frustrating. We're told that BPS wants, values parent voice. I've been on this several times and I don't feel like my voice is valued at all because I don't see how me taking time from my evening, taking time away from my children to sit on these hour-long meetings waiting for public comment to speak and nothing is done about it. The children at the SHA deserve what they were promised. My daughter deserves to finish out her school uninterrupted. Changing her school in the third grade causes a number of problems that I don't want to face. So I'm asking that BPS keep their word and meet us at the table to make a plan with us for us. Okay, we want to be a part of that conversation and I'm hoping that you all can just come to the table and hear what we have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Matey Polino.
My name is Mica. I am in the first grade at the PSH and I live in Dorchester. I have loved my school since I was four years old in K1. The PSH is superb. My teachers tell me that it's great to be bilingual. My mother and my grandmother speak to me in Spanish. My teachers helped me learn more and more English. This year, I have learned so many new words like brilliant and South America. Now I'm reading chapter books. Last week, I started a new series, Ivy and Bean. I love to read, also to write. I used to write just a few sentences. Now I write stories about my life that are lots and lots of pages. In math, I am learning how to solve problems with missing added. It is a little tricky, but I can do it. Don't you want kids to go to school, stay alive? Don't get rid of our school. Make it bigger so more kids will love school like me.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Bridget Reyes.
Where's Mia?
I'm at C. Good evening.
My name is Bridget. My name is Bridget and I'm in first grade at the PSH. I live in Dorchester. I speak Spanish and I'm learning more English this year. First, I had to learn my letters. Now I can read words with blends. My favorite thing to do is write. I write stories about my life. The PSH school... No. The PSH is a great place for me to learn. Please give us a fifth and a sixth grade so me and my friends can keep learning here. Thank you.
Thank you. Felido?
Hi. My name is Felido Diaz. I am a Boston Public School graduate and I live in Dorchester. I am Bridget's dad. I am back here tonight because I never imagined my daughter could learn so much this year. The PSH has been a wonderful place for Bridget to learn English and to learn how to read, write, and get along with kids from different backgrounds. Another thing I really like about the SHA is that the teachers keep parents informed. Thank you, Ms. Carver. We know how our children are doing and we know what's happening at the school. We have not heard anything from you about what will happen to our school after next year. It upsets me. This is our kids' education. It should not be a struggle for us to be informed. We want the SHA to continue. We want our kids to be able to have this great school. We want the Shaw to continue. We want our kids to be able to have this great school experience, not just this year and next year, but until they finish elementary school. For me, this is not just about my daughter. It's about all the children at the school and in the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speakers are Keisha Gideon, Brandon Michelle, Armani Cruz Angela, Navon Anderson, Jemai Sullivan, Janai Mariville and Gleason De Suto Sanchez. If you could please raise your hands virtually in Zoom. Keisha?
My name is Keisha and I am a first grader at the P A Shaw. I live in Dorchester. I told you before how I learned to read in first grade. Guess what? Now I am reading Jasmine and Pedro books. Those are chapter books and I am writing books too. Please listen to us this evening. Understand, we want the Shaw to be here for our younger brothers and sisters, like my little sister. And, and we want to keep to the Shaw all the way through sixth grade. They, I think it is your job to make sure kids in Boston do well in school. We are learning a lot at the Shaw. We need you to help us, not hurt us. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Brandon Michelle. Good evening.
My name is Brandon. I am in the first grade at the P A Shaw. I, I like my school so much. When I was five, I didn't know how to read, how to read words or spell the word, Mom. Now I can do all these things. We count the days of school. Today is the 149th day we have been in school. In 11 more days, it will be 160 and in 31 more days, it will be 180 days, the last day of school. I don't want to stop going to school because I love learning. I am so grateful for my teacher, my school community. I am so grateful for my teachers and, and my mom is too. Please don't hurt us. Please don't shut our school. I am a black kid and I deserve to have a school where I learn. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Armani Cruz Angela.
My name is Armani. I'm in first grade at the P A Shaw. I'm six. My favorite thing to do is math. I know many math facts like 50 plus 60 equals 110. My second favorite thing is reading. I did not know my letters when I began school this year. Now I am reading elephant and piggy books. I want more kids from my neighborhood to come to the P A Shaw. So, so they can learn as much as me. Our school is fantastic. We want to go to the Shaw for a long time. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Navon Anderson.
Hi, my name is Navon. And I'm at the P, and I'm at the Shaw and I'm in third grade. And why I'm here is because I want a fifth and sixth grade so our school can grow. So, give us a fifth and sixth grade. Many elementary schools in Boston get to have a fifth and sixth grade. It's not fair that we can't have a fifth and sixth grade. Our school is a special place because every kid in ours, in our school communicates kindly with the other kids. And we all also like to challenge ourselves. This week, I figured out that one-third is equivalent to 802,400ths. The more we learn, the more smarter we will get. So, please give us a fifth and sixth grade. Our school is made for everyone. This school spreads joy and fun like our park. And we are asking for a fifth and sixth grade. So, help, so can, so we can help our school grow.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Jemai Sullivan, followed by Janai Mariville and Gleason De Suto Sanchez. If you could please raise your hands virtually in Zoom. Jemai?
Hi, my name is Jemai and I am in third grade. As you know, the P A Shaw has been here a couple of times. Thank you for the fourth grade. I think we need to keep the fourth grade for future third graders. Instead of only getting the fourth grade for one year, you should help us keep our fourth grade for many years. Also, a long time ago, my uncle used to go to the P A Shaw and he said that there was a fifth grade. But then when he left the P A Shaw, he said that they took the fifth grade away and the fourth. We really need to grow the Shaw because when, when we go to a new school, I won't know anybody there and also other kids like my sister Kilani. If I leave the Shaw, she will have to leave too. She loves her teacher and the school. If we leave, if we have to leave, it will make her not want to go to school anymore. We're just kids and we really, and we also need the fifth and sixth grade to save our school. Everyone at my school is very nice and friendly. Please, we are a community and we are a family. We love this school. Plus, we were supposed to get a fifth grade anyways. So, I think we deserve to keep growing our school. I really, really love this school and everyone makes me feel comfortable and loved. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Janai Mariville. Janai, can you please turn on your camera? Janai, are you with us? Janai, we can't hear you unfortunately.
I am Janai, a part of the West family and I go to the P A Shaw School on Martin. I am Janai, a part of the West family and I go to the P A Shaw School on Martin Street. Thank you for giving us a fourth grade. What I love about the P A Shaw is that we get I am Janai, a part of the West family and I go to the P A Shaw School on Martin Street. Thank you for giving us a fourth grade. What I love about the P A Shaw is that we get to learn things in our mathematicians. This includes division, multiplication, as well as many facts about trout and science. Also, I love my teacher and my friends and I don't want to leave all of this behind. We are advocating for fifth and sixth grade in our school at the P A Shaw. This is what I propose for this school. Having a fifth or sixth grade would help my learning because I would learn harder skills like inverse operations in math and get through harder challenges. Even if those new hardships are difficult, I would still be able to keep trying my best. It would hurt my lunch act to change schools because I love this school and I don't want to leave all of my friends behind. It would take away some of the learning I have been doing at the P A Shaw. This school is special more than other schools. I love the way this school is. I just want to grow more. All I want is the school to be big and that will mean more students. It's for a special, talented and amazing kids.
Thank you, Janai. Next, we'll hear from Gleason De Suto Sanchez.
Good evening. I am Gleason De Suto Sanchez and I am in the first grade at the P A Shaw. I live in Dorchester. I go to school to learn and I keep learning at the P A Shaw. Now I can read dog man book and I'm learning combinations of 10, like 30 plus 70 and 80 plus 20. And even combinations of 120, like 100 plus 5 plus 5 plus 5 plus 5. I, I am not sure if there was a misunderstanding. When we came to you before, we were not asking for just one more year for our school. I want, we want the Shaw to go to sixth grade, just like other Boston elementary schools. Kids and families in Dorchester and Mattapan should have a great school like the Shaw, like the Shaw. My mother loves this school. I told you, our community is going to stick together and make sure our school continues to grow. That's why I am here and we will keep coming back until you hear us. Thank you.
Thank you. I will now invite our interpreters to offer support for our next set of speakers. I will now turn off the interpretation icon. Interpreters and the public will all be in the main room. Interpreters, please stop interpreting and mute yourself for this part of the testimony. School committee member Ms. Palanco Garcia will receive Spanish interpretation by phone when testimony is being presented in a language other than English or Spanish. Next, we'll hear from Claudia Fernandez.
Yes. Hello, Claudia. I'm Joseane. But ten cuatro minutos, por favor, manti frases cortas para poder interpretar mejor posible. Obrigada.
Bueno tarde. Mi nombre es Claudia.
Good evening. My name is Claudia.
I'm so happy that you continue to support the P A Shaw, who is in sixth class.
I would be very glad if you guys continue to support the P A Shaw School with a sixth grade.
And like, no, but today, but now that you have school, that you help our children, America, America, of course, America, you have economy, you have to be, you know, every time children have a good education, he will have to teach you knowledge through school, that they will be able to have a good future, a good future.
And we know that when the school supports the kids, that helps the American economy because that allows the kids to have a good, a good future.
And also, not only is this beneficial and that school also, and then school, and nobody who is in the zone is here, is here just for the space. They need the school, they are here, they are here.
And not only the kids benefit from this, but the school also benefits from this. And everyone that's here in this Zoom call didn't arrive to where they are just by themselves. They are here because they had a school and an education.
And so, and so, I think I can come in for a little minute. And so, I'm so happy that you continue to support the school. And then now that you are doing that, no, but today, in Dorchester, and you have people who have, who have a life below, a middle life, someone who is lucky, who has, who has money, and then the school, it helps you, it helps you, you lucky. And so, I'm waiting for this to continue to help, and America has a good vision and has a good vision in society. There are boys who also have a good support, who are lucky, who have money, in the school, like today, but it helps the boys. And the boys today, in the future, who knows, one, my son's son, my, my son is a great.
Claudia, I'm only second, I'm, I'm, I'm part. And we would like you guys to keep on supporting the school. I know I don't have a lot of minutes to speak, but we would like you guys to continue supporting the school because you see the Dorchester community has a lot of families from low and medium income. And I know that this school really helps this kind of families. Would you continue, Claudia?
And, and also, my son is a scientist. Now that he thinks, he sees a situation, he says, wow.
And E and L students with special needs.
Y que los niños, ah bueno, pero es difícil cuando los padres no hablamos inglés y los niños escuchan otra lengua como primer idioma.
It is very hard for us as parents when we do not speak English and our children are listening to other language.
A la vez que se signe un profesor de educación especial para cada, para cada clase de inclusión.
Um, we should have a special ed teacher for each inclusion class.
Es importante y urgente que nos unamos el comité escolar, los pa, los maestros y las escuelas.
It's important that um, school committee, parents and school leaders meet.
Para que, para que mejoren las condiciones de las 125 escuelas de.
Make sure you bring back. It's a.
Sorry?
So like that, um, we could get the schools, um, the, the better conditions for the hundred and twenty five schools in Boston.
Para que tenga mejor infraestructura todas, además que cada una de ellas pueda crear programas de in- de inclusión e integración de las familias.
Like that each one will have better infrastructure and also will have more family inclusion.
Trabajar, ah sorry, trabajar en contratar diversidad de maestros y que los padres y tutores estudiantes tengan mejores servicios de interpretación para las familias. Que, sorry, que, puedo terminar, que agreguen más programas extracurriculares y trabajemos arduamente para que no tengamos un receiver ship en, en Boston.
So yes, um, we as parents, we would like to see that um, all, all schools will have more extracurricular activities, um, and also we want to avoid to have a receiver ship in Boston.
Gracias, mes. Gracias, feliz noche, gracias por escucharlo, okay.
My next speaker is Maria Mejia.
Maria Mejia?
Eh, buenas tardes, me escucha.
Muy buenas tardes señora Mejia, por favor, le vamos a solicitar que hable en oraciones cortas para poder hacer mi interpretación apropiada de lo que usted quiera comunicar.
Gracias, eh, buenas tardes a todas las autoridades correspondientes de BPS.
Good afternoon to all the members that are present here from BPS.
Mi nombre es Mejia, vivo en la comunidad de Roxbury y tengo un hijo que estudia en la escuela pública elementary novation Blaston.
Um, I have, um, my name is Maria Mejia. I live in the community of Roxbury and I have a child that goes to the Blackstone School.
Como madre tengo la responsabilidad de alzar mi voz por mi hijo, por su escuela y por la comunidad.
As a parent, I have the responsibility to raise my voice, not only for myself, but I, for my community, my son and myself.
Necesitamos apoyo emocional y más recurso para los estudiantes de educa, de educación especial.
We need more emotional support for um, the special education students.
Ahora generalmente hay un maestro y un paraprofesional en cada aula.
Right now, we have one teacher and one paraprofessional in each classroom.
Nosotros estamos pidiendo que pongan dos maestros y un paraprofesional en cada aula.
We're asking for two teachers and one paraprofessional in each classroom.
BPS quiere quitar los paraprofesionales de las aulas de inclusión.
BPS wants to um, take out the paraprofessionals from the inclusion classrooms.
Y añadir más estudiantes a las clases.
And add more students to each class.
Eso no es justo y como padres no lo vamos a permitir.
That is not fair and as parents, we are not going to allow it.
No, es necesario restaurar y reconstruir nuestras escuelas.
It is necessary to reconstruct our schools.
Para mayor seguridad de nuestros niños.
For more security of our children.
Es bueno recuperar y aprovechar el tiempo.
It is good to um, recuperate the time.
Si Dios no permite que venga un rebrote u otra similitud como está pasando todavía con el covid.
If God permits that we will not have another surge of covid again.
Tenemos que cuidar nuestras escuelas ahora.
We need to take care of our schools now.
Porque nuestros niños son el futuro del mañana.
Because children are future.
Si no los, ah, si no lo hacemos ahora, ¿quién lo va a hacer? Tenemos que trabajar juntos de la mano, buenas noches, gracias.
If we don't do it now, when we're gonna do it, we need to work all together. Thank you.
Gracias. We will now activate the interpretation icon and all interpreters will be sent to your channels and you can begin interpreting again. We'll now invite our American Sign Language interpreters to support our next speakers, Muna Abnor and Jemaniq Vial. I'm not seeing Muna, so let's try Jemaniq. Oh, there you are. Good evening.
Hello, good evening. Hello, Boston School Committee. My name is Muna Abnor. I'm a resident of Roxbury and I'm a junior at the Horace Mann School for the Deaf and Hard of Hearing. Today, I'm here to talk about the HMS Building Plan. I first went to the Horace Mann School at the age of three and I've basically grown up there. I can't tell you how important that school is to me. It's my second home. I ask BPS and the city of Boston to please prioritize our school building plans and make that a commitment. We are the only deaf school in Boston. I know you already know these facts. But it's so important. You cannot ignore us or prevent the plans. It can't be because of our deafness. I'm proud to be an HMS student, extremely proud, and I am also very frustrated with the BPS system. We've been told multiple times that the school building is unsafe, that we have inappropriate conditions and still we're in the same building and we haven't gotten top priority for finding a new permanent billet, building. That's ridiculous and honestly, I was very upset by this because it's not the right thing to do. What about our safety and our health? I do want to believe that BPS listens and values HMS enough to be able to commit to a plan after the temporary building in Charleston. I'll keep fighting to make sure that HMS has plans for building something permanent and I'll do whatever it takes to make sure that they're able to find a permanent home. I also please ask you to consider not shutting down HMS because of the enrollment numbers or because we can't find a permanent place. Please help us to rebuild our trust in BPS. I urge you to consider improving upon how BPS supports the students at the Horace Mann School. You need to support your deaf and hard of hearing students. Lastly, Horace Mann is the biggest reason for who I am today. I'm growing as a leader, I'm learning my voice and how that is important and it matters. I wouldn't be here today without BPS and HMS's advocacy and guidance. This is something that will apply and impact many deaf students in Horace Mann School. They deserve to know that they can do anything without feeling limited due to their deafness. We, the deaf students, need our home back. Please bring us back to Alston. Bring us back to our home. And BPS, please do better on deaf education to provide for better access for deaf students. Thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you, Muna. Next we'll hear from Jemaniq Vial.
Hi, good evening. My name is Jemaniq Vial and I'm a middle school ELA teacher at the Horace Mann School for the Deaf. I've been in deaf education for over fifteen years and at the Horace Mann for thirteen of those. I'm not a resident of Boston anymore, but I was, and I'm speaking tonight about the Horace Mann. I want to thank the school committee for continuing to ask questions on our behalf and I want to thank the city for its support by including a site study in the capital budget to determine the permanent location for our new home. It's a good step forward, but I'm still concerned that it means BPS and the city have not had a clear plan for our future. We just learned that a brand new K through six school will be built in our current Alston location. After years of uncertainty about the future in our school, Horace Mann is left wondering why the school that has existed for a hundred and fifty-three years is still looking for a new location while a new school that doesn't even exist yet has a plan before us. We have a substantial community connection to Alston-Brighton. It's a central location for the deaf community and most importantly, it's ideal for the students that we serve from within Boston as well as outside the city. In case you're not aware, our out-of-town students bring in tuition funds to BPS and our school. Horace Mann is an amazing school with invested teachers who are incredibly innovated and have a language-rich environment where students are immersed in American Sign Language and English. We have a growing number of deaf staff who are language models for our students who are able to see themselves represented as deaf individuals daily. We have made tremendous progress in starting our work on becoming an ASL and English-language dual school. Just take a look at our social media page if you want to see any of the amazing things that we are doing. We strive to become a model school for the deaf and hard of hearing students, not just in the city of Boston, but in Massachusetts and beyond. We want to see a commitment in writing for BPS to bring Horace Mann back to our current home in Alston-Brighton and for the BPS to work with the city of Boston to include funding in the capital budget for our new school. Thank you for helping us advocate for our wonderful deaf and hard of hearing students.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Boston City Councilor Ricardo Arroyo, followed by Claude James, Rosalinda Mindy, Cassandra Samuel and Michelle Delicio. If you could please raise your hands virtually in Zoom, counselor.
Oh hi, this is Chief of Staff Jordan Frias. I'll let you know when the counselor gets on, apologies.
Okay, thank you. Claude James will be our next speaker.
Hi everyone, um, my name is Claude James and I'm a pair professional at Madison Park Technical Vocational High. I'm in my second year of a para.
Well, Mr. James, I'm having a hard time hearing you. Could you please speak a little closer to the microphone?
Is this better?
No. It sounds very, very distant. You try again, please.
Hello?
Um, we can't hear you. It's very distant, unfortunately. Would you like to try logging out and logging back in? We'll come back. Okay, thank you, sir. Okay, let's try Rosalinda Mittens. Good evening, Rosalinda. Can you please unmute?
No, they were, they sent for.
Rosalinda, are you ready?
I can't mute.
Good evening. Hope you're muted.
It should automatically start your video, then you.
Okay. All right. Good evening. Rosalinda? Rosalinda, can you begin for us?
Oh yes, I, I'm sorry, I wasn't, wasn't sure. Um, hello, good evening. My name is Rosalinda Madenci and I'm a current. Sorry about that. Um, I'm a current community field coordinator, paraprofessional and a proud BPS graduate. I'm also grateful to start a new position as a guidance counselor at, in, in the fall. But that's not enough. I've been working for BPS for over twenty-plus years. I have seen many changes, but I believe more than ever, in my opinion, this system is one-sided. I'm appalled that we are still having the same conversation about what we need in, in our contract for eight months now and what students deserve. We know that, that what our students need and our parents, teachers, our professionals, counselors and librarians and nurses deserve to have equity and equality and a seat at the table. We stand on gray shoulders of people before us who have fought for a seat at the counter, at counter seat. Embolishing segregation in schools, women having the right to vote and black and brown voting rights. We are not living in the nineteen fifties or nineteen sixties. We need to move away from system oppression but of equality. How can we look at ourselves in the mirror and say, it's okay, that's all they deserve? No rights to know where you will be working at or decisions for pay. When we have been through a devastating pandemic, we have lost so many loved ones. We are the first in the nation in the oldest educational system, but we are the last in taking care of our students and educators when we ask for equity. We need to put ourselves in someone else's shoes and have compassionate empathy for those who need us the most. It is our civic duty to protect our students and teachers. It is a disgrace to hear when statements are made about paraprofessionals being a burden. They are the backbone of our educational system when paraprofessionals are underpaid and overworked.
Twenty seconds.
Your teachers, counselors and nurses, how can we call ourselves social justice warriors when we can, we cannot stand for our teachers who are on the front lines of our classrooms and molding and changing young lives? Our students are in the fight of their lives dealing with social, emotional issue, dealing with home insecurities, food insecurities, violence and trauma. How can we continue to have a conscience? So I say to you this, we are not asking for much, but dig deep in your soul and ask yourself, will you want this for your own children? Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Cassandra Samuel.
Hi, good evening. My name is, good evening, school, Boston School Committee members. My name is Cassandra Samuel. I am a library parrot at the Curly K two eight school and I'm a member of the BTU negotiation team. I've been employed in BPS for over twenty-five years and is a product of Boston Public School, the Boston Technical High Class of nineteen ninety-three, which is now called the John D. O'Brien. I am testifying today to urge the school committee to schedule more negotiation sessions and to settle a fair contract before the end of this school year. I know that the last two and a half years has been hard for everyone, especially for BPS paraprofessional who have had many roles than normal and dead to be parents of their own children in BPS. We are, we are the paraprofessional that work before school, after school, and we are your bus monitors. We spend more time with our BPS students than our children, yet we are the lowest-paying staff in BPS. It's not because we have a choice, for many of us as single parents need to work three or four jobs just to make and need to live in Boston. On May third, eight months into no contract, BPS finally gave the BTU a proposal for the paraprof, paraprofessional. I was very disappointed and felt not valued by my employer. I kept hearing that BPS value educators. I didn't hear that on May third. The BPS negotiation wants, wants to remove many language that they agreed upon in the past contract that I could, all that I could remember hearing was the word delete from my employer. There were, there were three of the BPS proposal that stood out to me. The first was substitute coverage. Delete paragraph A, B and C. They want Paris to cover class at any time. They will remove Paris from special ed classroom and one-to-ones will have to cover for the classroom. Doesn't that violate IEP service for our students? Second, BPS wants to eliminate the rights to interview for Paris who worked to get a teaching license. Third, BPS.
I'm afraid you're past your time. Could you please wrap up?
BPS also wants to remove twenty-six paycheck from Paris, like myself and many other Paris. Twenty-six paychecks help us to be able to spend some six weeks with our own children and get refreshed for BPS. Let's, let's settle this contract and put it in writing to have a contract before the school year begin. Thank you everyone and have a good evening.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Michelle Delesso. After Michelle, we'll try Claude James once again.
Hello?
Good evening.
Hello, thank you for having me. My name is Michelle Deesso. I'm the Director of Steam at Boston Children's Museum and I live in Brighton. I'm on today with my colleague Alyssa Jordan to testify on behalf of PA Shaw Elementary. We're very fortunate to partner with the Shaw through a generous grant through Vertex, a biotech company in the Seaport. Vertex started supporting the museum and the Shaw separately, then brought the two together to connect us with the Shaw teachers so we could work closely with the teachers to add on to and bolster hands-on STEAM activities to their existing curriculum. In twenty nineteen, we had a focus group with some of the teachers at the Shaw and we're now in our third year of working together. From that very first meeting, the community and culture of the Shaw has really stood out to us. We have collaborated with the Shaw not only on the Vertex grant, but on other projects as well, which Alyssa will speak more about. The Shaw is a wonderfully reliable school. They're always on board and open for opportunities for their students. Even with all that they're currently juggling, the staff are willing to consider partnerships like ours to provide unique opportunities for their students. There's so much enthusiasm, pride and a heart in the school and the community. When we have a project, we always think of the Shaw as a potential partner. Alyssa and I and one of our other colleagues were at the school recently when the second, with the second grade classes. And in the midst of getting ready to leave for the day, the announcement was made that the Shaw would remain open and expand to fourth grade. There is a huge cheer throughout the classroom and the school. The teachers came back from dismissal with stories of students exclaiming what an amazing day it had been. Being able to see the love the students and teachers have for the school says so much about the amazing community that they've formed. The Shaw being open and adding more grades will allow that community to continue to grow and support each other, which will also have so many benefits for the students, their family, the school and the greater community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Claude James.
Hi everyone.
Good evening.
I'm glad it worked this time. I had a school Chromebook earlier. Um, but my name is Claude James and I'm a pair professional at the Madison Park Technical Vocational High School. I'm a, I'm in my second year as a para and I'm born and raised from Boston. I'm here testifying because I find it unacceptable reviewing the proposals that BPS has given to the Boston Teachers Union. I urge that school committees help reject the, the proposals from BPS and push them to meet with the BTU more consistently to come up with a fair contract. At the last bargaining session, BPS negotiation team presented several proposals that were extremely unacceptable and disrespectful to us as hard-working pair professionals. For example, one proposal would remove the option of being paid for the calendar year and being restricted to payments just through the school year. I can attest that this is unfavorable. Last year, I missed the deadline to submit paperwork to have this change in my pay schedule and not being able to rely on a steady paycheck for two months definitely hurt. Now BPS wants to take away our right to choose. This is not good. This along with other proposals from BPS are not appropriate for us to have a fair contract. We can settle a fair contract by the end of the school year with more frequent bargaining sessions. These proposals we're making as the BTU are an investment for our students and our school committees, communities. We are proposing modern school buildings so students can take pride in their school and can feel comfortable in their learning environment.
Twenty seconds.
Access to counselors and social workers so our community can have the resources to be holistic, holistically successful and inclusion done right, so our most vulnerable parts of our community aren't left by the wayside. Let's get this contract negotiated now so we can all feel confident with a fair contract going into the next school year. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next we'll hear from Alyssa Jordan, Michael Heishman, Matt Anderson, Carla Johnson, Nellie Casado, Morgan Cohane and Eileen Carver. If you could please raise your hands virtually in Zoom. Alyssa Jordan?
Good evening. My name is Alyssa Jordan, a resident of Roslyn Dale. I am from the Boston Children's Museum training my colleague Michelle Deesso to advocate on behalf of the PA Shaw School Community. As part of the collaboration that Michelle described earlier with the PA Shaw School, we've recently made another connection between their kindergarten grade level and the local community organization, the Urban Farming Institute. Through this connection, the Shaw children may have the opportunity to gain deeper understanding of where their food comes from as well as the importance of nutrition and environmental stewardship and how they can have a hand in growing their own foods even though they live in the city. It is due to the passion of the teachers and wanting to bring unique transformative experiences to their students and the priorities of the Urban Farming Institute to work directly with children who live in their same community that this new relationship has found footing. If the school has the opportunity to expand, then partnerships like these can have the capacity to grow, follow kids through more grade levels into their future and to sustain relationships as these children carry these experiences forward and to help children who live in the community feel immediately connected to it. Whenever the Boston Children's Museum has a project going on, it seems like the PA Shaw teachers are always first in line to learn about it. The school community is always right there signing up to test new materials, giving up their free time, taking workshops on the weekends, committed to bringing the best possible learning experiences to students in their community. Commitment shows when you're inside the school.
Twenty seconds.
The sense that these children know their teachers are their champions. Ultimately, the incredible aptitude of this community to develop lasting partnerships like this is something that BPS should consider observing as a model. We believe the Shaw community and, believe in the Shaw community and hope to grow and flourish, supporting both current and future students. It's an honor to be their partner. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Counselor Ricardo Arroyo.
Thank you very much for having me. I want to thank the school committee for the work that you do. I am actually here today to comment on behalf of the PA Shaw, which is a school in my district. I'm grateful that you heard our cries for help and for ensuring that we have an added grade this year. But would like to make sure that we are focused on making a PA Shaw a K through six full inclusion school so that we can continue to have what I have found to be a very engaged student body, a very engaged parent, sort of parent couns- sort of parent council there that is very involved in how and what their school is doing. And I think that is a school community worth preserving and lifting up. And so I'm hoping that as we do this, moving forward, that we continue to move towards a K through six and fully inclusion school model there and that they have some long-term assurances that they are eventually going to reach that. And so thank you for your time and thank you to everybody who has advocated on behalf of the PA Shaw.
Thank you, Counselor. Next we'll hear from Michael Heischman.
Am I on?
You're on, Mr. Heischman.
All right, thank you. Mike Heischman, Dorchester, Beja. What is unacceptable abuse? What abuse is acceptable? Mission Hill School Abuse was judged to be unacceptable. School closed. Back to 2014, what did central office and past and present superintendents know about this and what do they do about it? What did past and present members of the school committee, past and present mayors, past and present city council members know and do about this? Would the public ever know? Billionaires and millionaires live and work in our city. Acceptable abuse. Homeless students. Acceptable abuse. Why does the school enrollment in Boston continue to decline? Families and children move out of Boston because they can't afford the rent. Acceptable abuse. The BTU and its members want the city to build more affordable housing. The BPS says it's none of their business. MCAS, the Massachusetts Child Abuse System, an invalid and racist system used by our Commonwealth to misjudge and punish our children in their schools. In the early years of MCAS, my daughter, partner, daughter, and I discussed what we would do about the upcoming MCAS test. My daughter explained that the test would be unfair for Charlie. Charlie learns slowly, but he is learning and this test would be unfair for him. That year, 85% of our children boycotted the test. Resistance against abusive state power was much stronger in that school than any other school in the state. That school was the Mission Hill Pilot School.
Twenty seconds.
Receiver ship abusive state power. Desi denies our high school students their diploma because they have field MCAS. Desi takes over schools they label as underperforming because they have field MCAS. Desi turns these schools into test preparation factories. Desi fails to raise the test scores. Desi never leaves. I'm almost done. In the spirit of Mission Hill, we must resist BPS abusive power and abusive state power. In the spirit of Mission Hill, we must resist.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Matt Anderson.
Good evening. My name is Matt Anderson. I'm the Executive Director of Mosaic Interfaith Youth Action and a member of the Greater Boston Interfaith Organization, or GBIO. GBIO represents more than 107,000 individuals and supports BTU's priorities in its contract negotiations. We have received commitments from Mayor Wu and the newest city councillors to acquire a ratio of one social worker to every 300 students within BPS, one of BTU's contract priorities. In my previous roles in educations, I have worked extensively with students from Boston Public Schools within the therapeutic and educational environment. I'm here today to urge the committee to schedule additional negotiating sessions with the Boston Teachers Union in order to settle a fair contract prior to the conclusion of the school year as the negotiating team has continued to reject crucial proposals such as guaranteeing a social worker to student ratio of one to 300. In my experience, I have worked with numerous students who were not able to access appropriate supports within the Boston Public Schools. And I have often wondered how proactive and engaging systems of support could have truly changed the trajectory for some of the most vulnerable students. As educators, we seek to teach the whole child and empower them to be the leaders of tomorrow. But we fail them by not providing adequate and accessible mental health services within our school. I've seen an increased awareness of the need for additional mental health support for our students since the pandemic. And I applaud the efforts to make these necessary changes within the schools. However, as an educator, I have seen too often supports like these be taken away. As a school committee and a city, you have the power to ensure that these are long-term investments by putting them in the contract.
Twenty seconds.
I urge the school committee to schedule more negotiation sessions in order to reach a fair contract before the end of the school year. One that invests in the health of our youth by guaranteeing funding so that our schools will be appropriately staffed with social workers, psychologists, and guidance counselors. I urge you to work together to get the contract negotiated now so we can keep these supports our students desperately need. Thank you.
Thank you. Next we'll hear from Carla Johnson.
Excuse me. I'm Carla Johnson and I am a paraprofessional at the PA Shaw School. I apologize for my voice. I'm not feeling very well this evening. But I will persevere, just as we've taught our students to. I'm here speaking on behalf of our community because as many of the students have said before and families have also testified, our school is a very special community and we would like the opportunity to grow that community. So we're asking for a table during the planning that is required to grow our school community to a K to six inclusion. We'd like to, we'd like to show our children that speaking up really makes a difference. As of now, they feel that way. They've seen that coming and speaking up and making their, their voices heard led to a fourth grade for next school year. But like them, I'd like to see a stronger commitment, a commitment to more fourth grade and the continuation up to sixth grade so that they can finish their elementary years at the PA Shaw with us. Thank you for hearing, for hearing from us. Good evening.
Thank you. Nellie has not signed into the meeting, so our next speaker will be Morgan Cohane.
Good evening. My name is Morgan Cohane and I am the teacher librarian at the PA Shaw. I have been at the Shaw since its reopening in 2014. The Shaw is filled with students, families, and staff that want to keep our school and the values of our community intact. You have witnessed this by listening to incredible testimonies from some of our youngest learners. Our school has won numerous awards and grants, including being the winner of the Heart of America Foundation STEM Transformation that will completely renovate our library space with a ribbon cutting ceremony this June. This redesign will transform the library into even more of an inspirational learning environment for the entire Shaw community. I'm excited to have a space that reflects the values of our school, allowing for student accessibility, independence, and creativity. I am concerned that this incredible transformation and the voices of Shaw families are not being taken into consideration when thinking about a long-term plan for the Shaw. I do not want to dismantle a high-quality school that has numerous impactful, meaningful partnerships without a clear long-term plan discussed with our community. Meetings with the Shaw to discuss a long-term plan have been postponed. I hope everything that makes the Shaw so exceptional does not get lost without the input of our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Eileen Carver, followed by Sharnia Doten, Mary Taucher, Sabine Ferdinand, Shantae Elves, and Reverend Kevin Peterson. If you could please raise your hands in Zoom. Eileen?
Good evening, Dr. Cassilius, BPS staff and members of the school committee. My name is Eileen Carver. I'm a longtime BPS teacher as well as a proud parent of two graduates of the BPS. I live in the Field Corner neighborhood of Dorchester. Tonight I ask, what is the BPS vision for schools in 2022? We've heard Dr. Cassilius talk about quality guarantees for every school, including a library, a gym, a healthy and safe facility, which also is a strong priority for us at the BTU. All of these are important priorities. We at the Shaw want to assert that the vision should also encompass schools identified by students and families, especially those who are Black, Brown, and/or multilingual, where there is excellent learning and a climate of respect for everyone who makes up the school community. Week after week, over more than four months, our students, our families, and our educators have passionately spoken out to say that the PA Shaw is such a school. Once again, we ask you to preserve the PA Shaw, elevate student, family, and educator voice as a critical part of the vision for what makes a great school. We've heard feedback that some are unhappy with the number of people speaking to you tonight about the Shaw and what we have to say.
Twenty seconds.
Our present evening is a reflection of the depth and breadth of caring that is evoked by the continued uncertainty over our school's future. We want a commitment that the Shaw will exist and expand beyond school year 22, 23, and that our school will have a permanent place in BPS. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Sharnia Doten.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Good evening. My name is Sharnia Dot and I am the school social worker at the PA Shaw and I'm happy to be here tonight in support of my school community. When I think about a school community, I could not imagine not being at the PA Shaw. This school is important to me because of the close-knit community that has been created and will continue to be created. We want a K six community that, that offers education that is fully inclusive for everyone, regardless of their educational background or disabilities. The importance of growing the Shaw is to help students maintain, grow, and have relationships that are long-lasting that won't be severed by not growing the school to a sixth grade. In my short time as the first school social worker at the PA Shaw, I have seen the efficacy of developing scholars, leaders, changemakers, and advocates at such a young age where they're able to use their voice and not be afraid. And I want to continue that by having the Shaw grow. My hope is that as we grow as a school community, we'll continue to shape the lives of our students where they come to a place where they feel loved, appreciated, and the education is taken seriously. Lastly, I want you to think about your school experience when you were younger and the relationships that you made with your fellow classmates and the great impact that you may have had being in that type of community and maybe some of the relationships that you continue to have to this day. So that's why it's important to allow our school to continue to grow and push the vision of growing our school to a sixth grade. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary's not signed into the meeting, so our next speaker will be Sabine Ferdinand.
Hello?
Hi, good evening.
Hi, good evening. My name is Sabine Ferdinand and I'm a second grade teacher at the PA Shaw. And I'm here to speak on behalf of the Shaw, but mostly on behalf of the idea of advocating for your community and working for what you believe in. After hearing that, it felt like the Shaw was bullying or harassing. I'm going to keep this very brief, but I want to reiterate that this is not, this is what advocacy looks like. And this is what Nate Cooter had said, got other school communities what they wanted in their areas. Advocacy. Our Shaw scholars, staff, teachers have all advocated for the Shaw to grow and that is what we are hoping for. We also want to have a seat at this table. When members of BPS and Mayor Wu and people are deciding what is happening to school communities, we want to be involved so that we can advocate for our community and advocate for what is best for our community and the kids of Dorchester because that's what they deserve. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Shantei Elves, followed by Reverend Kevin Peterson, Abdi Ali, Gabriella Cartagena, Tanya Hall Queen, Sharon Hinton, Edith Bazile, and Cecily Graham. If you could please raise your virtual hands in Zoom. Shantei Elves.
Good evening, members of the school committee. My name is Shantei Elves and I am an eighth-year K one inclusion teacher at the Young Achievers K to eight in Matapan. I come before you today as not just a Matapan teacher, but as a member and officer of the Black Educators Alliance of Massachusetts, also known as BEAM. We are intentional about supporting Black educators and advocating for conditions that will improve academic performance of all children, but particularly Black children. I speak tonight on behalf of BEAM as we stand next to and fight in solidarity with the PA Shaw School Community. For months, parents and students like Skylah and Crystal tonight and some children as young as six have spoken at school committee meetings to share how impactful and beneficial the Shaw School Community is and have asked that their family culture be supported, preserved, and built upon, not torn down. The Shaw serves a higher percentage of Black students and a higher percentage of students of color when compared to the other schools that have been chosen for K to six expansion. The diverse students, families, and teachers of the Dorchester and Matapan area deserve to be listened to, just like children and families from other neighborhoods. The Shaw community needs a K to six full inclusion school that is in line with the BPS vision for elementary schools. This would enable Dorchester and Matapan students to stay within their home schools and their families would continue to be a part of a school community where they feel they belong. It is crucial to a child's development to have as little interrupted learning as possible. As we all know, consistency and access is a key to success. The Shaw needs to be full inclusion so that children and families in their K zero, K one center-based classroom do not have to find another school at the age of five. The Shaw is a school that can serve all students. However, the district is hindering their ability to provide that support and environment long-term, especially to those with significant disabilities. There is more than enough uncertainty caused by the pandemic and it is so disappointing to see how in a time when many BPS schools are struggling to give Black and Brown students the learning environment, family engagement, and school culture they deserve, that we are considering stopping their success. We are, we are considering keeping families in limbo instead of expanding the school to ensure students and families' success. When a school is closed, the outcomes for children don't improve and they leave children and families with feelings of loss. And you know that all too well, BPS. Need stability, not more trauma and more social molesse crises. And the Black Educators Alliance of Massachusetts will be fighting to see a full inclusion K to six plan fulfilled. Thank you.
Reverend Peterson has not signed into the meeting, so our next speaker will be Abdi Ali.
Good evening, everybody, and thank you for the opportunity to testify. My name's Abdi Ali, and I'm a resident of East Boston, a specifically engaged citizen, an activist organizer, and a lifelong resident of East Boston. I can tell you that we are in a state of emergency in terms of housing, and our families are confronted with a tremendous displacement across the city of Boston. We have seen... Boston has seen an incredible amount of housing construction, yet our communities are basically pushed out day in and day out. Consistency and stability housing is really important for childhood and the development of children's education. What I can tell you as a member of my community is that our families are expending over 50% of their income. That's violence there, because nobody should spend all of the money they earn to pay a rent. And those who could actually stay in East Boston are basically leaving with other community members or family or relatives. Sometimes we are seeing families inviting roommates to join them so they can afford to pay the rent. That is not healthy. That's not stable for a child. That's not safe for a child to have an unknown adult living in the house. But that is the circumstance that we are confronted with. So what we would like to see is that we would like to see Boston Public Schools to take an active role in advocating for housing and supporting our initiatives in basically stopping the zoning laws that are causing displacement and justification in our neighborhoods.
Fifteen seconds.
I'm sorry. So I want to also add my voice to the Shaw School and the paralegals. I'm standing in solidarity with them. They deserve... The community in Shaw School deserves to have a sixth grade included. And then our paralegals deserve to have an equitable pay. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Gabriella Cartagena.
Hello?
Hi. So my name is Gabriella Cartagena. I am an organizer with City Life U of Urbana, and we dedicate ourselves to housing justice, helping families understand their basic rights as tenants and their homeowners. And I'm here today as a former BPS alumni who graduated from the Donald McKay and later the Boston Latin Academy to say that it is vital for BPS students to have stable housing to be able to do well in school. It's so important for students in general to have stable housing, and it's important for this committee to recognize the demands from the Boston Teachers Union contract that includes housing justice demands, right? So important for you to take into account the union's push for housing stability and for BPS's role in ensuring that families in BPS have stable housing. Right now, we're seeing enrollment drop across the city, not because families don't want to be part of BPS, but because families are being displaced out of the city due to the affordability crisis, the housing crisis that is happening right now in the city of Boston. We think families think it's important for housing stability, one, for the development of the children, the development of the family, for emotional, physical, spiritual stability. And they want the BTU, Boston Teachers Union, to fight for it, right? Our students, students like myself, Black, Brown, Indigenous students, immigrants, is what makes the BPS district great. And we need to fight to make sure that they stay in the city and do not get pushed out away from the community that they built in their classrooms, right? The community built in the classroom is the community that allows you to socialize. It creates stability. It creates that emotional haven to be with your friends long-term and not be in a new school every other year or every twice a year because your family can't afford the rent that they're in right now. So it's so important to also take into consideration the housing demands in the BTU contract. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Tanya Hall Queen. Tanya, I'm afraid we can't hear you. Tanya? Tanya? We can't hear you. Tanya, I'm afraid we're gonna... Can you adjust your phone? We can't hear you. We'll have to move on. I'm afraid we're not hearing Tanya. Let's try Sharon Hinton.
Hello, I'm Sharon Hinton, mother of a BPS graduate, former BPS student, educator, community advocate, and founder and executive director of Black Teachers Matter Incorporated. For the record, we stand in solidarity with the PA Shaw School, its parents, students, and teachers and the Black Educators Alliance of Massachusetts regarding that. Thank you, school committee members, for still holding this meeting to listen despite not having a quorum. However, I have a few questions for you. Where do the members of the Boston School Committee stand on the DESI receivership? Where do current school committee members stand on an elected versus appointed school committee? Can we, as the public, your constituents, and stakeholders, know? I understand the power of unity and focus on any given initiative, purpose, or mission, and an appointed school committee can seem to provide that. I also value individual thought and the democratic process and the ability to not agree with people in power or authority who may or may not be right or confident or collaborative. And 99,000 voters have also said they support an elected versus an appointed school committee. I saw what happened in the past when individual school committee members didn't tote the party line or follow the mayor's wishes. Yes, this work is daunting, and it can be overwhelming. And I applaud those of you who are doing this work on top of just living and other jobs and careers. I get it. That being said, I have another question. Are legal means being sought by the school committee, mayor, and other elected officials to stop the DESI receivership? If so, please let us know so we can join forces. And if not, why not? Can we have a real discussion and interactive back and forth and not just testimonies about these issues? And not just... And please let us gain your insight. I see it. Can we have a real discussion and interactive back and forth about these issues and gain your perspectives on what you think about receivership in the future of the school committee? I believe you each have a vantage point and unique insight and perspective on these very important and challenging dilemmas. And these comments and sentiments are invaluable in making more suitable and effective decisions, actions, and resolutions by us. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Edith Bazile.
Good evening. Thank you. Good evening. The pandemic has changed what it means to be a teacher and a school leader. When it hit... Excuse me. Educators delivered care packages with books and supplies, wrote letters to keep students' spirits up and maintain connections with families. Teachers and school leaders are not only the center of learning. They symbolize what it means to be a nurturing society. But what do school communities like the PA Shaw get in return? Uncertainty and pure agony. BPS must interrogate why teachers and families must take to the streets in the middle of a pandemic to demand nurses in every building, sufficient masks, air quality, ventilation systems, reasonable class sizes, more counseling staff, and to keep the beloved schools like the PA Shaw open. At the height of COVID, BPS gutted the academic department, then required teachers to simultaneously deliver remote and in-person instruction with no support. Teachers rose to the occasion. BPS focuses on trauma-informed strategies instead of adequate facilities and support for successful schools like the PA Shaw. This induces trauma. Instead of siloed decisions, schools need healing-centered engagement to mitigate the systemic trauma inflicted by detached leadership. Not surprisingly, now there is a shortage of 900 teachers. Last year, it was 500. It is almost double. Yet, just last week, the senior advisor for special education stated there are no special education teacher vacancies. Where's the communication? After four months of her leadership, special education continues to be in systemic disarray. What is the point of hiring leaders who have no plan for improvement and make no impact? Where's the accountability? Madam Chair, and I hope the Honorable Mayor Wu is listening. District is in chaos. Summer and fall are coming, and there are no district plans. BPS cannot function without a plan while driving teachers and school leaders to leave in droves. Please stabilize and protect the district. Immediately appoint an interim leader to lead a transition team and address the crisis. BPS needs a strong summer and fall academic plan to support students, families, and hard-working school staff in BPS. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Bazile. Our next speaker is Cecily Graham.
Good evening. My name is Cecily Graham, and I am a PA Shaw graduate educator and director of education and youth development for the Office of Boston City Councilor Julia Mejia. Tonight, I will be presenting the resolution supporting the PA Shaw Elementary School community on behalf of Council Mejia. This resolution was written before the Shaw, through advocacy, secured the fourth grade for school year 2022 to 23. However, the spirit and message of the resolution continue to be very relevant and important. We worked on the resolution alongside the Shaw and Councilor Arroyo's office. Whereas in Boston Public Schools across the district, there are educators, students, administrators, and family members who demonstrate the strongest values of quality public education, including a commitment to community engagement, racial equity, social justice, and to being a neighborhood resource for education. And whereas the Pauline Agassi Shaw Elementary School, a K-023 feeder school located in Dorchester, demonstrates each of these values thanks to the hard work and persistent advocacy of educators, families, and the community at large. The amazing work of the educators and administrators of the PA Shaw School demonstrated recent school committee meetings where many students spoke and about how much they have been able to learn since attending the Shaw. And one student in particular spoke about how they had not learned to read before enrolling at the Shaw. But it is now... But now is able to read thanks to the work of her family members and educators. And despite billed BPS plans to expand the Shaw to K-5, the school committee has gone back on that plan, recently deciding to close one of the two third-grade classrooms in the school. And although the administration has assured the family members, educators, and neighborhood that the school will not be closed, it is unclear whether BPS will honor that commitment. And schools like the Shaw, which demonstrate education excellence, should be looked on as schools to be nurtured, developed, and expanded. And advocates for the Shaw are currently in the process of pushing for a fourth-grade option at the Shaw as a demonstration from BPS of their willingness to recognize and expand on the work being done at the school. And school closures, transfers, and grade reconfigurations have a major impact on the mental health of students. And allowing students which demonstrate educational excellence to expand would help allow students to grow and develop in one space. And the Boston City Council has an obligation to ensure that every student has access to be local quality public education in schools like the Shaw. Now therefore be it resolved that the Boston City Council recognizes the tremendous work of the family members, students, and educators of the PA Shaw Elementary School in creating an exemplary school environment. And be it further resolved that the Boston City Council urges the school committee to support the community push for a fourth-grade option at the PA Shaw Elementary School and eventually for a fifth and sixth grade so the Shaw comes into alignment with the current BPS configuration for elementary schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Graham. If you send us that resolution in writing, we'll be happy to distribute it to the committee. Thank you. Let's try one more time. Tanya Hall Queen.
Hello?
Good evening.
Okay. I'm sorry about that. Hello, my name is Tanya Hall Queen, and I have been a one-to-one with a student who has blank stare and grand mal seizures. I was born in Boston and graduated from BPS. I am testifying today to urge the school committee to settle a fair contract before the end of the school year. At the last bargaining session, your negotiating team presenting several proposals that were unacceptable and very disrespectful to us as paraprofessionals. This fight is about protecting the hard-working employees and the students who, if not advocated for, will lose essential services that they are entitled to and deserve. BPS proposed taking away one-to-one powers from students to serve as substitute teachers, and that is the most disrespectful thing they can do. As a one-to-one, it makes me angry because I am not hired to be a teacher or run a class. I am hired to give consistent, direct services to a specific student that needs specialized attention. I've been in situations where I cannot give 100% attention to my student because I had to tend to the needs of the whole class when it specifically states in the IEP that these students need one-to-one attention at all times. If I am pulled away from my one-to-one and anything happens, I would be responsible, and the first question that will be asked is where was the one-to-one unless the student is physically not in school? It is unfair of BPS to try and double-dip when there are already regular paraprofessionals that do support the whole class and actual substitutes that do teach when the teacher is out. These corner-cutting tactics only affect the students and school personnel. It does not affect the people at the desk who make these proposals without knowing what it is actually like being in a classroom. Please sign the contract and keep the students in your thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you. Chair Robinson, that concludes our speakers for general public comment.
Thank you. And as we said earlier this evening, due to the fact that we do not have a quorum, we will not be able to carry on our business meeting. We want to thank everyone who spoke tonight in public comment. And we will be concluding this meeting at this time and will be rescheduling the business portion of the meeting, hopefully within the next week. Otherwise, our next scheduled meeting is on May 25th. Thank you and good evening.